I call this September 5th, Sammamish Planning Commission Meeting to order here in City Council Chambers at Sammamish City Hall. We'll start out this evening with the roll call starting on my right.
Mark Lewis is here.
Hello.
Mark Baughman.
Larry Crandall.
Roschino Farrell.
Rituja Angierut has had an absence and Eric Brooks still thought that he might make it, but maybe not. He had a family conflict.
Okay.
But we still have a quorum, so we are fine.
Okay.
Okay, approval of the agenda. We have a couple of things on the agenda for this evening. Does anyone have any objections to approving the agenda?
Nope.
Seeing no objections, the agenda for this evening is approved. Even though it's been a while ago, we do have meeting minutes from July 18th. Does anyone have any comments or corrections on those meeting minutes?
No.
Anyone object to approving those?
No.
Seeing no objections, the meeting minutes from July 18th are approved. Next is our non-agenda item, public comment period. So if you're commenting on the agenda items this evening, which are some technical amendments to the comp plan, some fairly small stuff, and then our initial discussion of several about 5G and the wireless towers, that will be part of that. If you're speaking about anything else besides those items, now's the time. So does anyone have any public comment on non-agenda items? Mary, of course.
So I'm going to pass out one map to each of you because I have five maps and there's five of you, and Sarah's going to try to put it up online. Can you shrink it a little bit so you can see a little bit more of all of Sammamish? Like if you go one minus on it. Okay, great. And then my name's Mary Victor. I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. And I'm showing these, it's a series of five maps, just to show that these are Concerned Citizen and actually pulled these layers in 2015 from the city's GIS. And they show some of the special features that I'm typically interested in for stormwater. Most of them are along the left edge of Sammamish where you can see all the squigglies. So just to give you a color coding, the red is the outline of Sammamish, the urban growth boundary. The blue surrounds the water bodies. You can see Lake Sammamish, you can see Pine Lake, you can see Beaver Lake and other smaller water bodies. And then the little squigglies that you see mostly running up what I call the left shoulder of the city, or kind of up at the top there by where Sahali is, those are steep slopes. So there is a steep slopes GIS layer that the city has that already exists. And then second slide, please. If you just scroll down. And then, I'm not sure how this will show up on here, but you can see in the little squigglies over the left, there's now another outline. And what that is, is that's the landslide hazard area that is soils-based. So if you look at those, you'll see the red area that's the landslide hazard. You'll see that steep slopes exist out of the landslide hazard area, and they also exist in it. So you don't just have steep slopes in a landslide hazard area, you have them out. Currently, the city's definitions for those are wrong. Next slide, please. This one, the green outlining area, which includes kind of the thing that looks like this up at the top, that's actually Sahali, the golf course up there, that's the erosion hazard area, but not just erosion soils, it's the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies. So where you have erosive soils, the green area is where the erosive soils start having a slope. So go to the next one. And then this one combines that with the steep slopes. Because what happens is if you have erosive soils, and then you start having a slope, you can have water problems. And then when you really have a slope, the steep slope, that's called the no disturbance area, and you're not supposed to build in that. And that's not mapped, but you can kind of see there's portions of that erosion area that have a lot of steep slopes in them, and there's those that aren't. You're going to have different regulations for those in existing code and in updated future code. And then the last one. This one maps the landslide, the steep slopes, the erosion, and the seismic. And those are known as geo-hazards. And according to the Department of Commerce, they updated their critical area stuff for 2018 and 2019. Cities have to identify those whether they plan by the GMA or not, and they must protect them for life and property, not just for functions and values like streams and wetlands. So I just wanted to show those maps with you. I'll collect them back because I sent you online copies. You'll be able to zoom in on it.
Thank you, Mary. Does anyone else have non-agenda public comments? Let's move on to new business. The first item this evening is some technical amendments to the comp plan. We'll have a presentation and have a public hearing and discuss recommending these to the council for consideration.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Sara Estri. I am management analyst with Community Development. Here with me, I have, we have Kelly Hildy, Planning Manager. We are here today to discuss the present, present, present a comprehensive plan amendment technical item and answer any question you might have. So in tonight's meeting, we are going to present a presentation, we are going to present technical amendments, which will be followed by the public hearing. And after the public hearing, it would be a Planning Commission will deliberate and provide the recommendation to the city council. I would like to provide a little background, a story about these proposals. As you might remember, in 2018, Planning Commission recommended to city council to approve placing a proposal on the annual docket with the three, that contained three minor corrections to the comprehensive plan. So in tonight's meeting, I'm going to present these proposals and provide staff recommendations. The first proposed amendment is to add a legend to figure LU1 on page LU5 of the comprehensive plan land use element of that. As staff was working on this project, we were able to locate the original files of the comprehensive plan 2015 and add a legend to the map, as you can see in this slide. The second proposed amendment was to update the aquifer susceptibility map in order to show the boundaries of northeast Sammamish Water and Sewer District as well as Sammamish Plateau Water. Staff recommended, instead of updating the map within the comprehensive plan and to avoid future confusion for staff, like for citizens, staff provided that we could add a note in page 19 of introduction of the comprehensive plan that people can go to the city's website in order to get the most updated maps and GIS data. Here, I would like to take a moment to take you to the map that our GIS team worked to update it based on the information received from northeast Sammamish Water Sewer District and also Sammamish Water Plateau. If you want mine, I'll just take you to the website. As you can see here, oh, sorry. As you can see here, our GIS team worked together to add different utility areas here. For example, you can see northeast Sammamish Sewer and Water District as well as Sammamish Plateau Water, as well as different layers that has aquifer susceptibility. And you can also, for example, you want to see the water district, water boundaries of, in this map, in different districts. It's very easy, and you can click, you can zoom in, and you find out, as well as you can go check out, for example, to see different options in this map. It's not loading. So this map will be updated, integrated to a Sammamish tool, property tool that we have here, and these tools, layers that I just showed to you will be integrated here, and it would be very accessible for people to use very soon. The next item of the agenda, the next item would be the third proposed amendment would be updating the TBP Plan acronym, which refers to Trails, Bike Ways, and Pathways Plan to Non-Motorized Plan. The acronym list is located on the second page of the comprehensive plan, which is right after the table of contents. Also, a TBP acronym is refers to planning efforts of the city of Sammamish, non-motorized elements such as bike ways, a passway, side ways, that integrated to the, that integrated to the public right-of-way, and within, inside and outside the public right-of-way. And staff is not recommending this amendment because the non-motorized plan does not exist, and it would be an inquiry reference if we update that into our plan. Here, I made a summary of our proposals and staff recommendation, as you can see. At the end of the presentation, after tonight's meeting, the proposed technical amendment will go to the city council for final review on October 1st, after which anticipated approval and adoption is scheduled to be early 2020. And unless there are any questions, I will head it back to chair for opening the public hearing.
Can I just, just to be sure that everybody is clear on this, this, what we're seeing here is kind of the end of a whole process to make changes to the comprehensive plan. These are fairly minor changes, and two of the three you've made, and the third one, intervening events made it kind of irrelevant or inaccurate, so you're not, that's not being recommended. So is that a reasonable summary for everybody to kind of just get their head around?
Yes.
This is nothing really particularly new. This is just the end of a long process, and one of the items in that process didn't work out because of the nature of other things happening with the language in the plan?
Exactly. That's, that's very correct. That third amendment, do you want to go back to the amendment matrix there? No, the one, the slide afterwards, thank you.
This one?
Yes. Yes, we're, after looking into this further and seeing where the use of the acronym TBP Plan was actually used in the comprehensive plan, it's used correctly because there is no non-motorized plan, so it wouldn't be a correct reference, but yes, I agree with what you said.
Okay, so does anyone have any questions? And just as a reminder, we'll do the public hearing, we'll do a motion, we'll do deliberations and make hopefully some kind of decision. But if there are questions for Sarah or Kelly, this would be a good time.
Not so much a question, it's just I'd like to be in the sunlight here.
You shouldn't be.
But it will go. You hit on it, the chair hit on it, a long TGIS, a lot of work went into this, so staff, thank you for that, because this is started a few years ago, and it's finally coming to, to an end. And I think I like what I see. Acronyms are problems anyway, so good luck with all this.
And if I may make one other note, I do want to thank the applicant for providing this insight and showing us that, hey, there are some missing pieces and, you know, to have the most updated information, we were able to work with this applicant prior to coming to the Planning Commission and presented our recommendation and had support for that. So I do want to thank the applicant for pointing out some of these minor errors that needed to be corrected, so, thank you.
Great. Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing, and the public hearing is for this particular topic, all right? So I'm opening a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to make any kind of comments about this particular topic? Mary says yes? Okay, go ahead, Mary.
Hi, my name's Mary Victor, and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish, and I am the applicant for the docket item. And it did take, I submitted it one year and it got declined because none of them passed, and I've missed the deadline the next year. And then I submitted it a second year, a third year, second time, and it finally got passed. So I want to thank the Planning Commission and City Council for allowing it to go forward because particularly where they placed the square on page nine of the packet where it says, "They are going to take public input, and we are going to change the comp plan." The little square for the online maps is right there, so I thought that was particularly well-placed. So I, there is a lot of work that went into finding the little things, but I wanted to go and tell you that I'm good with everything they've done, but I wanted to give you some reasons why. So the legend that was missing on the map, you just couldn't tell what the gray and the green and the green were. And if you looked on the facing page in the comp plan, it says, "The natural features of Sammamish influence land use. For instance, steep slopes and wetlands limit development potential." But if you don't know where the steep slopes are, or where the legends are, where the wetlands are do the thing, you can't do that. Also, in the goals and policies, which is in a whole nother section, it says, "Recognize and preserve the natural environment as an important element of the city's identity." So it's really important to do that and write code for it, but if it's not clear in the comp plan, the comp plan's the guiding light, and from that flow your development regulations and things. So it was really important, even though it was a small change to do. It also took about two months to actually figure out what the information was and where it came from. So I suggest in the future, maps need to have a data source where you got them in a caption that's meaningful, just so it's more useful to everybody. So that, so that Deborah Monkberg, who is the Studio 3M consultant, and also Doug McIntyre had been working on this, so I thank them as well. And then Sarah, Mary M. Leitner had also reworked the whole SMC 24 thing, so it's easier to submit dockets. You can get them through, you can submit them any time of year, and then they're considered once a year, so that was excellent, too. And then also, on the work that's being done for the new maps, it's really good to have it as an online tool, and I like that. And Sarah had done an excellent job showing with technology where the aquifer susceptibility is red or very high. And there's another thing called a critical aquifer recharge area, class three, and I'm wondering if those map together. So you'll be able to instantly see things online that you otherwise couldn't tell. So I thank the GIS staff, who I believe is Beth Carpenter, for doing that. I also think when the colors are picked, they should be chosen carefully because there's a lot of different layers that can get turned on, and sometimes you can't see them, so that's super important. So as you heard in my regular public comment, one of the things I would like to see is I already showed you the steep slopes layer is available. And I also know from talking with Beth Carpenter that Danica Globalcar, who's one of your very esteemed stormwater people, did a lot of work on this streams map, and we've paid hundreds of thousands of dollars for those to get mapped through the basin plans that we do. Those are available internally in the city, but they're not available publicly online. So my request to the Planning Commission tonight would be that in addition to passing the docket items as they've been presented, that you would ask that a steep slopes layer and a steam streams layer be added, and then maybe a little reordering of how they show up on the map, so it's more like all the erosion stuff should be grouped together. So I'm good with that. And then the last thing I want to talk about is the Trails, Bike Ways, and Pathways Plans, or the TBD Plan. It wasn't really clear what that plan was from just reading the comp plan the first time I read it all the way through. I did later learn that under Volume Two, which is the background information for transportation, there's actually two pages that do talk about the non-motorized plan, so I attached those to the email today. And then, just today, I talked with the Parks people last night, and then I went online and just searching for the TBD Plan. There is a final version of that, it's from 2004, but it had a lot of good ideas in it. So the information is there and available if people want to look it up. And it is being integrated into the Transportation Master Plan for the right-of-way stuff, and then for the Parks Pro Plan, which is the non-right-of-way stuff. So it still exists, but it's been mishmashed around and renamed a couple times. So I think that's all good, and the city is working on it. But I thank you for considering these three very small docket items, because they are important and they help with the planning. And just because I have a few more minutes, when Sarah was turning on the new water district overlays, the original water district started down in Pine Lake. There were 14 people around the lake, and they said, "Hey, why do we all have to have separate wells? Let's have like a community water." So that's where Sammamish Plateau Water got started. It's got about 50 employees. And the northeast Sammamish Sewer and Water District, that's up north, they only have about eight employees. They started off as a sewer district, so Sahali actually had their own sewer district, and then it grew into that. So on the north version, and then the south version, kind of out in King County and down in Iziqua, there's actually an area where the two overlap, where northeast provides the sewer and Sammamish Plateau Water provides the water. So like where Romero Valarama lives, if you happen to know that along the lake, he actually is in both those districts, so he actually gets two different utility districts. And that's important for planning and for knowing where to hook up. And you can't really see those things. You could see them on the aquifer susceptibility map, but it was messed up in the comp plan, so we got kind of a backup one because the original one had been lost. But instead of having a paper map, it's way easier to have the overlays, and then people can learn about that and look. Because the one thing I learned about growth is growth follows sewers, and wherever sewers are, that's where people are going to build. And you pretty much can't build anymore on a regular private water well unless you have a really big acreage, or maybe you're not in the urban growth area. But those things are very important there. There's three wet utilities. There's water, there's sewer, and there's storm. And now we have the storm bandit maps, and that's on a different tool, but a lot of that information is coming together. So it's really great to have it online. And the last thing I'll say is when I met with Beth Carpenter, I'd worked with her online before through email, but she's the GIS staff, and she said, "You know, we're really trending toward open government. That's where, when we have information as a city, we make it available to the people to use, and maybe you have to put a disclaimer on it." But I think it's an excellent way to go. I'm glad to see this Sammamish property tool that she showed online was first released publicly in August of 2017. It had been used internally, and I'd seen consultants use it before, but it was very frustrating that public didn't have access to what staff did, so I'm glad to see that you're trending that way. So in addition to passing these and thanking everybody tonight, please ask for a steep slopes layer and a streams layer because they already exist. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary.
I just wanted to say, that's a refresher course in topography. Thank you very much. And you brought up, you shouldn't bring things up because then I remember, but if people have not visited Sammamish Plateau Water District's tower recently, you should make it a special trip. Not only is the top painted, but they have a very interesting lower mural, and there's even a yeti in there, so, or Bigfoot, you folks.
All right. Does anyone else have any public comment about this agenda item? Okay, I'm going to call the public hearing closed. If someone could make a motion.
I move to recommend to City Council the approval of technical amendments to the comprehensive plan as drafted in Exhibit One of the September 5th, 2019 packet materials.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that we approve these recommended amendments, or recommend them to the City Council for approval, I should say. Any discussion, questions, comments?
Are we going to consider making an amendment that was asked for to include the, and I'm kind of looking at staff for their help on this, the steep slope layers in the stream?
That wasn't originally docketed for us to work on, so we would have to go back and do that work.
And I think those are things they can do with a map, perhaps not have to go through this process.
Yeah, I would recommend not going through the, one, not going through the docketing process, we can work with the applicant and provide more information before we do anything, so yes.
So I call for the question.
It's been moved and seconded to recommend to the City Council to approve these technical amendments. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Okay, that passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, which I presume everybody's here for since you're all sitting patiently, is the wholly exciting discussion about 5G.
And I would like to recommend just a couple of minutes as we transfer staff here. We have quite a big group presenting to you tonight, so if we could just have a couple of minutes, that'd be fantastic.
Who's it that always says, "Talk amongst yourselves"?
Everybody ready? Dennis Osborne, Principal Planner here with the city. This evening, we're going to talk about wireless communication facilities, and I got to get on the right mouse pad here. So, there we go. So what we're covering this evening is informational only. We're going to talk about why we're changing the code, the rules and the regulations. We'll get touched upon by Eileen with Legal Counsel here on the city. We have a gentleman here to talk about health issues. And then our consultant will talk about process to develop the code, and then at the end, we'll talk about next steps, and then of course, public comment at the end. And I know that the providers have a presentation they want to share with the commission this evening. So why are the code changes? So there's a variety of reasons. We'll start with the conflicts within our existing Sammamish code. It's a bit dated. There, it's in about three different sections of the municipal code, and so we want to consolidate that down into one area. We have a series of state statutes that we need to deal with as well. But the big driver, the next two circles you see on the PowerPoint, is compliance with the FCC rules that came out the first of the year, and really the actual fact that the 5G is getting deployed, and our code doesn't address that. So those are real, the real driving factors. These are the, sort of a summary of the statutes, and again, Eileen will touch upon these, the Telecom Act of 1996, you might hear about that, the various state statutes we have to be compliant with. And really, again, the FCC rules are really the driving force here, especially for small cell or 5G, and then of course, our own city rules. And then the three key things we're looking at when you'll see the code at our next meeting is where will they go? Where are they going to be allowed? What process will they be going through? What kind of application approval process? And the design criteria, how will they look? So those are the three areas we'll be focusing in on. I went a little too fast. Thank you. And so, the FCC rule requirements cover, what is a small cell? It gives us a definition. You'll hear the term shot clock, and those are, that's the timeframe that we have to review certain applications. And again, Eileen will touch upon these a little bit more. Safe harbor, that's another term the FCC uses. That's the fees that we can charge to, to process the permits for the wireless cell community. And then aesthetics and design, some parameters there. And as we're working on this code, the FCC rule does not allow us to have a moratorium, so we can't stop them while we're putting a code in effect. And it keeps jumping twice, and I'm not sure why. So what is a small cell? What's 5G? Three key things to a small cell. One is greater speed, lower latency, and lots of devices. And so what does this mean? The providers here will probably give you a better definition than I can, but in a, from a layperson, it's a lot faster, which ties to the latency. You could download, the example I use, you can download a movie on Netflix on your personal device, and it may take a few minutes, and with 5G, it's done in like a second. Lower latency is that sort of delay time where you're seeing that wheel spin on your screen. It basically almost goes away. And you can do all of that on lots of devices. So you could have like everybody here download the same movie at the same time, you expect maybe a delay with 5G, boom, everybody's movie's downloaded. And what that also means for us in this community is the 5G also, with deployment, will probably take care of some dead spots in the area, allow some greater connectivity in the area. And then, in the, in the longer-term view of it, 5G also will probably play a role in autonomous transportation, whether that's through the air or cars or whatnot. And that's because of that latency being so low, it's almost like real-time data coming through. So that's what small cell is. Thank you. So here's some pictures. On the left, you'll see, that's a, an array on a, a little package on a pole. The one on the wire is called the strand mount. Go ahead. And then on the left, that's called a And then on the left, that's called a sort of creative or a stealth small cell. Again, that's 5G. It's on a light pole. Primarily, the array, you know, the antenna, the equipment's up on the top of that light pole. The middle one is what was called or referred to as a monopole. That's a situation where maybe they couldn't find a place to attach it on a streetlight or a public facility or on a building. It's just a standalone monopole that is a 5G system. And then possibly even on public, public structures. The larger antennas you see around the tank, that's a macro cells, but there's some really smaller antennas on that one, and those would be the 5G ones. And then things we probably want to avoid, sort of, you can see that one on the left, really out away from the pole, the cabling going outside and the conduit, the structure not fenced in, just an attractive nuisance, for lack of a better term. So then we get into the shot clock. In a nutshell, we have some parameters that we have to do permits in. So an example, I threw a couple up there, 30 days for a right-of-way permit, and then up to 150 days construction for other than small cell. And then you heard me mention safe harbor. So here's some examples of those. So $270 per small cell facility for a reoccurring fee. So if you come in, put in one small cell, 270 bucks, you come back a few months later, make an application, $270. Again, if you did like a group of up to five, it'd be $500, and then once you over five, $100 per unit. So there's some economies there. If it's a brand-new pole, then we're going at $1,000. And again, those are prescribed by the FCC. We can go above those, but we have to have good rationale and a defensible rationale as to why we got out of those safe harbor, those safe harbor fees prescribed by the FCC. Again, aesthetics, we can get into that, but they have to be reasonable, which means no more burdensome than similar infrastructure. They have to be objective. They can't be random, like, well, I like this, I don't like this, which gets us to the third point. So it has to be published in advance. We have to have some criteria in place. And then, as I mentioned in our code, we have three areas that we want to consolidate down into one telecommunications code, which is what you'll be seeing at the next meeting, and that's 21A-55, 21A-20, and a little section out of 21B. So that's a quick overview for, just to get you started. I'll touch upon a couple of the points I see up on the screen here before I hand off to Eileen. As you're doing some homework, you may hear some things, just to make you aware. The Ninth Circuit has taken up consolidated cases. There's been some appeals about the FCC rule, and so you might hear about that. The FCC's been petitioned to reconsider that 5G rule. I know the House put forth a bill to repeal the FCC rule. And so there's things going on out there that may have an impact on that. But at the end of the day, it's still the rule that's in place, and so that's why we're still moving forward. But I just wanted to touch upon those in case you hear about them, okay? And so where we're at is tonight's 19th. We're just doing the presentation of what, what you can expect coming down the pike. The 19th will actually be the presentation of the code. And then on the 17th will be the public hearing. We'll have deliberation and recommendation hopefully from you folks. And then early 2020, on to City Council. Any questions from you?
I have a couple. In the process of, of thinking through this, are we looking at what other cities in our community are doing, particularly nearby, you know, Redmond, Mississippi?
Yes, we have. We, we, AHB will touch upon this a little bit more in their slide, but we looked at five codes and sort of scored them out. And so we have looked at, and we're really sort of using some of Isaguab, Bellevue, so in assembling the code that we'll be presenting to you folks.
So when you say that, are they ahead of us in this process?
They have their codes adopted. Yes, yes.
Okay. I guess I, I suspect some people may ask, what are the consequences of not complying with the FCC requirements?
I would defer.
And that's fine. And we can, you know, if that's next, that's fine as well. And perhaps this is also a question for Eileen in some respects, is I think some people would ask what level of control we actually have over things that we care about. In other words, you know, you could, you can envision saying that everything has to look like a, the, the monopole or something like that. And certainly, that, I think, would be easily interpreted as excessive, but there must be some kind of definition about how much we can enforce what things have to, how things have to be done. Is there any way to describe what level of authority we actually have?
Good evening, Planning Commission. Eileen Kiefer, Kenyon Deesend, we're the city attorneys for Sammamish. It's a complicated question. I don't want to step on my own toes because there's, there's a lot of different flavors of laws and regulations. Honestly, it depends on what it is that's being permitted. Some things the city may or may not have more control over. I'm going to give Planning Commission sort of a 30,000-foot view of all the different moving pieces, but you're always welcome to call or email me as well if you have additional granular questions after this. As far as level of control, though, generally, I would say lower than normal for a planning commission. You know, you guys are used to seeing, having a lot of dominion over, you know, the zoning looks like this, these are the aesthetic controls that we're used to having, these are the tools we're used to having. But what I'm going to go over is that there are federal laws and regulations that more strictly constrain planning commission and ultimately City Council than normal if you're just talking straight zoning or the other land use tools that the city has.
Just had a couple of things to mark.
Oh, thank you. Excellent. I have a slide driver. Okay.
I think maybe we have just a couple more quick questions.
Yes. Well, I just, just in kind of going through all that, I wanted to thank staff. They put on the connect Sammamish. The, the National League of Cities did a report on this issue, and I found that very useful. And they came up with six strategies for city leadership on this issue. And so I thought that the information that came from that, very useful. And they also highlighted two or three cities and how they moved through this issue, Boston and San Jose, and one other that escapes my mind at the moment. So I thought that was interesting, and it's kind of a, a good way to kind of jump off on this subject because a whole bunch of things just started coming to me the more I thought about it. And some of them are just little details, and some of them are bigger issues. And going through and seeing what the, the FCC said that we can have power over things like design and concealment standards, development siting criteria, charging reasonable fees, conducting environmental reviews, regulate in the public right-of-way, and regulate antenna attachments. So it seems like there, some of the things we'll have influence on. Anything beyond that, we won't. But, and I was interested in seeing some of the email feedbacks that came from citizens, what they had to say on the issue. But one thing kind of that stood out to me, because when I thought about this and I saw the pictures of what the small cell antenna will look like, I think now, going back to old technology and look at what our, how our electricity is transported to our homes, and how from my own personal point of view, had that kind of is a grotesque sight on our city streets. And I think this is kind of an opportunity when there's a new technology coming into our city that maybe we can do our level best to maybe make this at least presented to our city in a little bit more aesthetically pleasing way, so far as we have input on that. But one of the first things that came to mind was when a provider is going to bring in one of these small cell towers or whatever form they will be in, it's going to go maybe on private land, or going to go on the building of a business, how much input the property owner or the homeowner will have on, yes, I want this on my property, no, I don't want this on my property, and please, thanks, but no thanks. And if it has to go on their property, will they have any say on where on the property it's going to go and the maintenance of it? I look at, we see it all the time in our city, when our trees are trimmed at various times of the year because we don't want branches of trees pulling down our power lines, and how our trees are impacted by the maintenance of utilities. And will this have another impact on our trees and how much our trees are coveted in our city? And we've gone through the whole process, or we're still going through the process of the Urban Forest Management Plan, and making sure that our trees are protected through this whole process too, and the under story, that's part of that. So these were just kind of things that came up to my mind as I was going through this and thinking, yes, 5G, I know it's got to happen, it's coming, and we don't really have any say in that, and most of us will probably enjoy it. But there are some other issues that we need to think about, how it's going to affect how our city looks, so. Those are my thoughts right now. I'm sure I'll have more.
Anything else before we hand it over to Eileen? Okay. Thanks, Eileen.
All right, if you go to the next slide, please. So, Commission, much of this presentation, first of all, I'm going to take again a 30,000-foot view. And there are many moving pieces here, and there's moving pieces in the city as well. There's the, the interplay between the deployment on private property, and as the Commissioner aptly noted, that it's going to go on, on public property as well. And in fact, the city will see more, more use of its right-of-way. So we have both a planning element and a public works type element. I'm going to concentrate more on the planning land use type elements as, as of more interest to this commission. So where to start with is that there is a federal overlay, a fairly substantial federal overlay compared to the land use concepts that you'll be working with on a day-to-day basis. So those are B2 components, both the federal laws passed by Congress and then rules adopted by the Federal Communications Commission. So we'll start with the Telecommunications Act of 1996. This really laid the groundwork for a lot of the telecom, both federal law and regulations that we see today. And so this was really the first federal act that really limited traditional city authority over placement, construction, and modification of wireless communications facilities within city limits. This is the act that established that local regulations can't unreasonably discriminate, which is pretty straightforward. Cities can't treat different providers differently. The act was intended to create and enhance competition. Local regulations similarly cannot effectively prohibit service. Obviously, a de facto prohibition on wireless communication facilities would be illegal, but this language is also an alert to cities that regulations that are too restrictive, so restrictive that providers can't comply with them, are also going to be illegal. And then out of the Telecommunications Act of 1996, there was a 2009 FCC declaratory ruling, which established the first shot clocks. You heard Dennis refer to those. I, I'm going to briefly touch on those, but I think they're going to be of limited interest to Planning Commission. Really, it's of more interest to staff, as staff is the one who has to get the applications through within the prescribed amount of time. But just know that you'll see that when you see the draft code, that there will be references to shot clocks. Okay, next slide, please. So fast forward to 2012. The Congress passes, passes the Spectrum Act. And what this did was create a new category of wireless communications facilities, known as eligible facilities requests. And so what Congress was trying to do was to basically create a de minimis category of, of siting and review at local governments. So in order to get either equipment upgrades or equipment additions that are very small, get them through the process quicker. So this applies to co-locations, removal and replacement of equipment, and also height or size increases of existing structures within certain thresholds. So the thought was, we're not putting up a brand-new tower, we're just maybe adding an antenna to an existing tower, maybe we're making an existing structure a little bit taller or a little bit fatter. That shouldn't have to go through the process, a siting process anew. We should be able to get sort of a fast track. And so there was also the 2014 FCC rules. We have yet, yet more shot clocks for eligible facilities requests. There are shorter shot clocks. And what was unique about this is that, to get to the chair's question earlier, is what is the, what are some of the consequences of not complying with the FCC rules? Well, in this case, if the, if staff doesn't process the applications quickly enough, the applications are deemed granted without any further action by the city, without any further action by the applicant, without anyone having to go to court, they can put, they can make the, the eligible facilities modification that they've applied for. So this is one that cities pay pretty close attention to. Okay, next slide. And then late last year, there was the FCC declaratory ruling and third report and order. And this is the small wireless facilities rule that Dennis was referring to earlier. And so this is designed to aid 5G implementation, as well as just clear, clear the way for additional deployment of small cells, which can also be, as I recall, 4G technology. The rules provide a definition of small wireless facility. It severely restricts the permissible fees that cities can charge. That's what Dennis touched on earlier. They also provide that aesthetic regulations and restrictions must be clearly defined, ascertainable, applied in a principled manner, and reasonable. Dennis touched on this earlier as well, is that, so these aesthetic regulations can be no more burdensome than applied to similar infrastructure. So think about the, and a lot of times, remember that small wireless facilities are going to be deployed in the right-of-way more and more and more. So that's what the standards are that you should be thinking about of, how do we regulate other users of the right-of-way? What does that look like? Because the providers are also going to be looking at that. And additionally, to know that spacing requirements count as an aesthetic regulation. So be mindful of that, and also be mindful of the trade-offs on spacing requirements. We can talk more about that if the, the commission's interested in that. And then finally, this, the last declaratory ruling and third report and order established yet more shot clocks, but this one without a deemed granted remedy. So we've got three different sets of shot clocks on the federal level. So staff is going to have a very good plan on how to implement the wireless, the new wireless code to be able to stay within all of the different shot clocks. And then the next slide. And so finally, in addition to all of the different pieces of federal legislation and the FCC rules, there's still the state overlay to contend with. For example, SEPA review. Some small wireless facilities are SEPA exempt, but not all of them. For example, ones of a certain height in the R-zone are not SEPA exempt. So that's something that staff was thinking about a lot as, as we've been developing this code. Also, too, just know that there is an RCW chapter on franchises and master permits that relates to use of the public right-of-way. That's of little interest to you, probably more interest to public works. And know that there's yet additional shot clocks in the, in the, that particular RCW. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I appreciate the time to be in front of you today, and I am just trying to keep this, again, at a 30,000-foot view, and you guys are always welcome to call or email me if you've got additional questions.
Sounds like we're playing a lot of basketball.
Can I just ask one quick question? What kind of timeframe are we looking at when we're starting, going to start to see 5G permits and that type of thing coming through, or when vendors are going to want to start putting this infrastructure in place?
That's, that's a good question. I'm going to have to defer to the folks who are here from industry on that one. I would imagine somewhat later than Seattle, but more than, say, the, the north bends. I, I think it's going to come from the I-5 corridor and workout work from there.
So are we talking, is this a year from now? Is this happening this year? Is it happening five years from now?
I would just echo a bit of what Eileen shared, not trying to not answer your question, but I think the providers probably have a better idea. Just in doing some general reading, though, I would share, you know, anywhere from a year to a few years out, up to even 10.
So medium term.
But they may be the more rural areas, somewhere in that timeframe, but the providers may have a better, better understanding on that.
Thank you.
One thing I certainly think that we should, as this process goes forward and the discussion proceeds, talk about is to provide some kind of understanding about with the various shot clocks, what's the process for the public to be aware that a permit has been submitted or quest, particularly if it's close by them, and to have the opportunity to comment or ask questions. Whenever I hear that we're being forced into certain timeframes, I'm concerned that the normal glacial speed that these things go at could lose a lot of people who will find something installed in their neighborhood unexpectedly, and then they'll come to us with the pitchforks and, and the City Council. And I mean, I, I think they have a valid point, is that they should have the opportunity to at least know about it in advance. But when I hear that it's kind of has to go within a certain timeframe, that may not happen, so we need to be really... So we need to be really crystal clear about addressing that and having the best method we can think of to communicate it.
My question goes to about 300,000 feet. Is, is there a major idea that this will be, like our interstate highway system? Is there interconnectivity between states? Is that why the federal government is keeping this big picture?
That's an opinion question, and I think, so I can give you an opinion answer. I think, yeah, they, they see it as a, I think the federal government sees it as a utility on a national level, which is why the preemption.
Okay. Well, that helped me when I think about this, that it's not going to stop at the state lines. And it might be helpful for national security, and that's what I was looking at. And then I, a little tired of being the oldest person in the room, maybe I should start up some new interests. But it, it, on the positive side, looking at the screen, and I'm not high-tech, but I actually grew up where you hand-cranked the telephone and asked the operator to give you the number. Or even those days, you could ask for the time of day. I don't think you want to do that anymore. Okay, thanks.
I think that comments, well, and I think the analogy is well-placed, these things. Obviously, the carriers are not Washington-specific. They have to learn how to cite in every state, in every jurisdiction. I have so much respect for the permit techs that have to learn all these different codes and be able to comply with all these different applications and permitting. And so that's, that's, I think, some of the impetus between, behind some of the federal preemption.
I would also just make the last comment, perhaps, that I'm certain that there are people who have concerns about this, but there's also positives for our community in that, you know, there's better access to the Internet. Communication will be improved in emergencies. This could be a valuable resource. So we need to find balance between the restrictions and the positives that it brings for our community and everybody else who has it. So I just know for certain that my kids will love it.
Can I just say one last thing, Mark? The report that I referenced earlier that the city have online, it's the National League of Cities 2018. They came up with a report called Small Cell Wireless Technology in Cities, and they came up with six strategies. But the first one seemed to be like the most important in terms of what we're about to do. The first thing they said was to gain a full understanding of the technology and important safety considerations, that local elected officials and decision-makers should ensure that they understand technical, political, and legal implications of the technology, its deployment, and any existing policies related to small cell facility citing. This will ensure that the best interests of the community are upheld while new decisions around small cell sightings are being made. So it's kind of worth, it's a report kind of worth looking at. They kind of give some small test cases, and they kind of give you some, you know, arrows, little directions to where to go and things to think about as we move through this, because I think this is, it is a new technology. We're probably all new to it, and so it brings up different aspects that we need to think about. So I think it was just worth mentioning.
Okay. Anything from anyone else? Dennis or Eileen, anything else?
We have another presenter for you real quick.
Okay.
For about a five-minute presentation, and then after him, we have one more. But the next gentleman up is Mr. Patrick Andre, if I'm saying, if I believe I'm saying his name correctly. He's going to present a little bit about potential health issues, okay?
Good evening. My name is Patrick Andre. I'm an independent consultant here in the Seattle area. I have a degree in physics. I work in the electromagnetic environment, mainly with electronics to make sure that they are safe, such as like on aircraft, that what you allow you to use your laptop computer on an aircraft and the airplane doesn't make a right turn, or something like that. So that's kind of my background. But I do have a lot of knowledge and information on radio frequency energy, radio frequency technology. And I also work as a third-party auditor for Thurston County, for the City of Seattle, and for a few other government agencies. As an independent person, not associated with any, any company, I am just Andre Consulting. Now, about 5G radio frequencies, the, the frequency ranges these things are going to be used at, many of these frequencies are already being used by cellular telephones now, in the 600 to 5 gigahertz range. Lot of communications already happening down there. What they do want to add is a high-frequency range that's going to really open up a lot of bandwidth, meaning it's a bigger pipe to dump a lot more data and a lot more information. The, the concept of 5G technology, though, is essentially, it's a language. It's a way to communicate over those same frequencies. It's not a different type of technology that is going to dump a different type of energy on you. It's using existing frequency ranges that are already being, being used by other, other technologies. It's going to use something called beamforming. What beamforming is, is a lot of the current type of transmissions that are being used now, radio, television, and cellphones, is similar to just turning on a light in a room and dumping light everywhere. Beamforming is more like shining a flashlight. The concept is that they want to be able to take these, these towers and aim the energy at the person who's using it. So it's going to be a more direct person-to-person communication. It's not going to dump energy just everywhere as a result. So it's a completely radical technological change in the way these transmissions are going to happen. They're going to be, there's a, we're going to be using a term called millimeter wave. Millimeter wave is, it's a frequency range above microwaves. In this case, 26 to 30 gigahertz is this, this frequency range that we, we want to use. This probably sounds like Greek to you, but it's a, it's a much, it's about 10 to 100 times higher in frequency than what's currently being used for current, current communication. Now, it should be noted that a cellphone only is under communication with a tower when it's making a phone call. It's not transmitting continuously. It'll ping every once in a while, but it doesn't, it doesn't talk continuously. Things that do talk continuously are TV and radio stations and, and things of that nature. They transmit all the time. For example, five miles away from you here on top of Cougar Mountain, there's 12 FM stations, and they transmit up to 100 kilowatts continuously 24 hours a day. A cell tower transmits at 20 watts only when you're making a call. So it's, it's a lot different basis for the type of energy that's being transmitted. Now, the type of health concerns that we, we have, the World Health Organization's been looking at this for a long time, as have a number of other organizations. They did classify it as a group 2B carcinogenic, say, radio waves in general, not cellphones, not anything. But they, they call it a Class 2G carcinogenic, meaning it's possibly a carcinogenic. But under that same classification are things like aloe vera and pickled vegetables and talcum powder. There's a lot of stuff that it's like, well, we're, we're not sure, but we think we have a loose connection with some, some possible cancer-causing agencies here. Now, that is for radio frequency in general. Cellphone usages in themselves, you're going to see here, are not necessarily under that classification. Now, the World Health Organization, when they, when they came up with these groups, came up with four, five, five different groups. Group 1, 2A, 2B, 3, and 4. Group 1 is likely carcinid, issues of carcinogenic problems. And Group 2, 2A is probable. A lot of items in those groups, and a few of the ones in Group 2B, ended up in California's Proposition 65. You probably see these Prop 65 warnings now everywhere. The interesting thing is, radio frequency and cellphones are not in Prop 65. They did not consider it an issue. But the, under the classification of 2A, or Group 1 and Group 2A, it's really interesting to see some of the stuff that's in there, like sunlight. UV is considered a carcinogenic. Air pollution, alcohol, processed meats, so everything from sausages to, to hot dogs. Those are Group 1. They are likely carcinogenic type issues. Frying food, just the process of frying a piece of meat, is a Group 2A. Red meat is 2A. Drinking hot beverages, anything over 150 degrees, such as your cup of coffee or just a cup of hot water, is considered Group 2A. And you guys are working here second shift, essentially. God help you if you go out for a beer afterwards, because you're taking Group 1, 2A, and 1 together here. So just a forewarning, I just thought I'd let you know that. Okay, so going to the, the next graph here, the, the thing you're looking into this graph is, the green bars are the cellular subscriptions per 100 people. About five years ago, this thing crossed the 1:1 ratio. There are now more cellular subscriptions per person than there are people in the United States. I know for myself, I have a tablet computer that's a cellular subscription different from my phone, so I'm a 2-per, 2-subscriber. The new automotive cars are also going to have cellular connections as well. So, so that's why this thing is now greater than a 1:1 ratio for, for the people in the United States. On those lines, what you're looking at are, the top line is the incidence of cancer in the United States per 100,000 people since 1975 to current, well, this is 2015, but I've got data for '16 and '17 available. The gray line is mortality rate, and at the very bottom there, you see a blue series of dots. That's brain cancers and neurological problems. The incidence of brain cancer neurological problems since 1975 has, has been between 6 and 7. It peaked in 1990 and has been decreasing since 1992 in the same manner as that gray bar is kind of declining. There, they have not been able to associate any brain cancers with cell, cellphones. They, they just, they're, they're not making that connection. So as hard as they have tried, and, and I even have a list of people who have tried here, American Cancer Society, National Cancer Institute, the National Institute of Environmental Health, U.S. Drug and Food and Drug Administration, the U.S. Center of Disease Control and Prevention. All these people are trying to make any sort of association with radio frequencies and cancer. And it's so loosely connected that they're saying, we can't, we can't make that connection. We can't associate these two yet. Finally, there is a lot of biological research that has been going on for many, many years. The first data I ever saw actually goes back to the '30s, where they were trying to make these associations. They're just not being able to show that this is really an issue. 5G modulation is only a language difference. This is not a different type of technology that's going to be scarier or, or more harmful just because it's 5G. The, some of the data, as I was doing this research, I found that there was one talk, or one paper that was done where they took two, two groups of rats, and they could, subjected one group of rats to high levels of radio frequency in this type of frequency range, their entire life, from conception to death. Some of the male rats had some issues with heart cancers, but they were dumping high levels of energy on them. None of the females had any problems, and the whole group that were exposed actually lived longer and were healthier than the, the control group. As a result, people are now looking at using these frequency ranges for medical, medical analysis, especially for breast cancers and things of that nature, because they're finding it's really not harmful, and they're getting better results than they are with using X-rays, which are more harmful, because they're ionizing type radiation. And radio frequencies are non-ionizing. It means they don't break up the molecules inside. The other thing, too, is that these frequencies, this 26 to 30 gigahertz stuff, is everywhere already. It's used in proximity indications on your car, blind spot warning, brake mitigation. Those are using the same frequency ranges. Police radars use them. Those light, those signs on the posts that tell you that you're going 25 miles per hour in a 20 mile-per-hour zone, that's, that uses these same frequency ranges, as do the radars that open the doors for you at the supermarket. So it's everywhere already. It's only just being modulated differently, and we have really no evidence that this is really causing any problems. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Thanks, Patrick. Anyone else have any questions for this evening? Oh, we still have another one. Is this the last one, Dennis? Okay.
Oh, okay. All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. I'm just going to give you kind of a brief overview of the process that we've been using to develop the draft code that you'll see at your next workshop on this. So my name is Brittany Port. I'm a land-use planner with AHBL. We are a land-use planning consulting firm. The city brought on to this with drafting regulations that both respond to the FCC and the state requirements, but also respond to the city's unique values and aesthetic considerations, you know, all while being conscious with what we can control. So the tough task of sort of finding that, toeing that middle line, we are attempting with this code. So tonight, the agenda for this part of the presentation, I'll go over just briefly the city's current regulations, how the city regulates wireless communication facilities, give an overview of the code development process, brief kind of discussion of what those regulations will include, and then just talk about next steps for what you might expect at your next meeting. So as Dennis has mentioned, the city's existing wireless communication facilities code, it's older, was adopted in 2010, subsequently amended in 2012 and 2016. And it was really developed to respond to the technology that was in place at the time. You'll see to the right, a large monopole. So some of those bigger antennas and facilities that you're probably more accustomed to seeing, that cover a large area and really address the coverage aspect of what the service providers are tasked to do for their, for their customers. That technic, that technology, though, is evolving. Small cells are now needed in order to provide service in smaller areas and address capacity issues. So in areas that are more densely populated, where there's a lot of traffic, these small cells will be used to add capacity to the existing wireless network. The providers will give you some details about their, their technology, but it does require placement of those antennas at a lower level than the macro cells, so what you've probably seen at 60 to 80 feet. These are going to be maybe more 30 to 50 feet in height, so they'll be a little bit lower in height, which doesn't mean that, though, we're going to see some of that equipment. So the city's, our small cell wireless facilities. The current small cell network requires antennas to be placed every 500 to 1,000 feet. With 5G, they will probably be a little bit closer, maybe 250 feet to 750 feet. That means that we're going to see them, there's going to be a higher, there's going to be a proliferation of them with, you know, upwards of four wireless service providers. You'll have a small cell for each of those spaced at that frequency. There are going to be a lot of them potentially. So that's something that we need to address. And the city's wireless regulations, as of right now, really do not address small cell wireless facilities. And that's what we're tasked to do right now, is to make sure that there is a path for As Dennis mentioned, another goal of this process has been to consolidate some of the city's existing codes into one chapter. So I found a couple additional ones, I think five different codes that kind of relate to them. The city's definitions, permitted uses, the wireless chapter, and then some of the town center regulations and design guidelines. So what we will be proposing is that the city repeal its existing wireless communication code and all of the references within other chapters, and consolidate them into one chapter. This will really allow for the city's staff to implement the code in a more streamlined fashion, to be able to hand one chapter of the code to an applicant, and they will be able to just take that and, and understand all of the, the requirements. So as part of the process... So as part of the process for developing the code, the city staff did evaluate five different communities' codes, Bellevue, Redmond, Kirkland, Renton, and Issaquah, and ranked them. That sort of gave us some parameters to work in. They, for instance, really liked the exemption section in Bellevue's code. In Redmond, they liked how critical areas and their buffers were incorporated and how they were discussed. In Renton, I think there was some language on inspection requirements. And then generally, Issaquah's code was favored from staff, just as far as how it was streamlined and how it would be able to be implemented. So we used that as a base for this code, pulling in some of these other code sections. Staff then did an internal review of the code. We are currently now coordinating with the wireless service providers in a technical committee, including legal review, to get some comments on that code, and then we will be making some changes to it before you see it at your September 19 meeting. So just want to talk a little bit about the public engagement aspect of the project. So we, city staff did conduct a booth at the Sammamish Farmers Market two weeks, Wednesday, the 24th of July, and August 7th, where they could sort of work or educate the public on the purpose of the project, what they should expect, and kind of just give them some education on what small cells are, what 5G is, and what they should expect to see. And also talk about some of the limitations that the city has in this code update in regards to the FCC preemption. So getting into a little bit of the proposed regulations, they will include, I think as has been asked, what the permitting process is, the land use permits that would be required. We are proposing right now Type 1 and Type 2 land use permits, as well as some exempt activities. Building permits, right-of-way permits, and then trying to take into consideration the shot clock for particular wireless facilities, and ensuring that the land use permit process allows for the city to meet that shot clock. On the right-hand side, another thing that we'll be preparing for your review are some help sheets. So this should be able to give applicants and the public kind of a cheat sheet on what the requirements are for a particular wireless facility that they would like to deploy. So as mentioned, the proposed regulations will also include some siting criteria, getting at the proliferation of these facilities that may be deployed, where can they be located? So there are three siting categories, Tier 1, Tier 2, and then a prohibited location. And the applicant must demonstrate via technical documentation that they've evaluated all Tier 1 locations before moving on to Tier 2. This really is to ensure that these are being deployed in a conscious manner in the city's public realm, so identifying where are the preferred locations. If those are not feasible for the provider's objective, then moving on. Prohibited locations then could be approved with a deviation or a variance, again, provided that there's technical documentation that all of those other locations have been evaluated. The code will also include design criteria, location, height, screening requirements, setbacks, so those will all be items that are addressed. One thing of note, you know, as Dennis had shown in one of his slides, just the design and placement of ground equipment, and ensuring that if it's within the right-of-way, it's not causing issues with ADA access, it is serving as a public amenity, as kind of a trade-off for being able to locate in the public right-of-way. And then for equipment that might be mounted to a building, ensuring that it's going to be concealed within the structure, consistent with the underlying design of that structure, if it did need to go through a design review. So those are some of the design criteria that we're including. And then some additional requirements, or just some additional considerations of the code. It will include batching of permits, so if there are a set of permits that are likely of the same nature, they're all going within the right-of-way or so forth, they could be submitted to the city as one batch, and the city can just kind of review them in one permit, speeding up the process of the deployment and limiting staff resources for reviewing these permits. Wireless communication facilities will need to be inspected by the city, maintained in accordance with their conditions of approval, their required concealment or screening. And then there are provisions for when a wireless communication facility is discontinued in use. If it were discontinued for up to 60 days, after 60 days, it'd be deemed to be abandoned, and so need to be dismantled. So I have just kind of a little schedule graphic of what you should expect to see in kind of the public engagement that we did in the summer months. We will be coming back to talk to you on the 19th, and then I think I have the 10th of October for the Planning Commission public hearing, but I know, Dennis, you may be headed as the 17th, so I might need to make sure I haven't gotten my wires crossed. And then, just going forward into 2020, anticipating that council will be reviewing and deciding on this, so that's kind of our general parameters of our schedule and what we're working under. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have while I'm here.
Yeah, I have a question. When we're talking about siting of the small cells, are we only talking about public land and public right-of-way? We're not talking about if a provider wanted to cite such a thing on a person's, on a private property? So are we only dealing with public land?
Yeah, that's a great question, because I think it came up earlier, and I don't know if it was addressed, but siting on privately-owned property may occur. Those are typically negotiated as leases with private landowners, so they're not just plopped onto private property. So there would be an opportunity for the landowner to negotiate a lease with the provider to ensure that it's placed where they are happy with it being placed on their property. I think where that could occur is maybe in more urban commercial kind of nodes, where if it works to place it on a rooftop or attached to a building, and they have other restrictions within the right-of-way, perhaps they might look there. But generally, negotiating a private lease with a landowner, it is, it can be lengthy and a little bit unpredictable, so it may not be somewhere that you'll see a lot of them.
And we're looking at a lot of these, right? So are you saying each provider, each telecommunications company, for want of a better word, will have their own small cell antenna? So we could be looking at a lot of these, and they communicate with each other over a couple of hundred feet, right? They have to be quite close to each other to communicate, so we could be looking at quite a bit of this new technology. And I, this is the other thing that came to mind when I saw this, was that I know our Arts Commission have gone to quite a lot of lengths over the years to decorate those rather large junction boxes around our city, and have decorated them with historical pictures, and what, having gone to great trouble to do so. And I think about, because it was mentioned in the documents here how there could be a small cell up on a pole, and then there might be a refrigerator-sized unit accompanying it, not always, but in some situations. And I did then wonder, would that provider be amenable to the Arts Commission doing something similar again? So that's just something, another thing I was thinking about, about when we talk about how invasive it may or may not be to our community, and what all this is going to look like. Because even from some of the pictures that you've used to illustrate what this technology's going to look like, none of it's attractive, right? So, and I know, you know, it's not going to be, and there's only so much you can do with it, but I just think about those things, because I know it's important to our residents, you know, the neighborhood character of our city, and I just wonder the impact of this, even though in of themselves, they may be small, but when there's a large number of them, they're going to have an impact, and we are going to notice them, just like you said. And I want us to kind of think about that, what is the city going to look like when this is, when we start to do this? Because it doesn't seem like it's going to, we'll get to a point where we'll be done, because they'll probably always be adding more and more and more, right? So I think we need to be careful and think that through when we're putting these regs together.
Does anyone else have any questions for Brittany? Go ahead, Mark.
One question quickly. With the number of these antennas that are going in, does it make all the other cell antennas obsolete? And if so, are those going to be removed?
I think the providers can talk to that more, but my understanding would be no, because this serves to solve the capacity issue of too many people uploading and downloading data, whereas the larger cell towers are really providing the means to make a phone call, you know, that general cell service, that network that you're accessing, but this is to deal with the latency issues, as Dennis mentioned, and then just, you know, where there are gaps in coverage, they may be able to enhance that. So I think, you know, you actually kind of asked the question about the proliferation of them. I think probably in the short term, it's going to be areas where there is a gap in coverage, and it's necessary in Sammamish with the, you know, rolling topography can be kind of challenging for the existing network, and so that might be somewhere where you see them immediately. But that kind of vast, you know, every 200 feet may not be something that happens anytime in the near future, nor is it necessary.
I'll have a question in a minute, but first, an observation, and it just struck me, as busy as staff is, and looking at different regulations, I think it's very proactive to consolidate all these codes under one code. That made a lot of sense, no matter what we do with the rest of it, I think that looks like an easy thing and should happen. The other thing is a question, and will the permits fees pay for, or cover or pay for the city inspections? I take it yes, but I just wondered.
Yeah, as I understand, there are limits on the fees, but I think that's something that will be kind of figured out with the city's fee schedule, and generally, the land use code wouldn't address.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Josh.
I think you pulled up five other cities that basically were done with their code. How behind are we relative to other cities in the region, and will that put us behind in implementation compared to other cities? That might not be a question for you, but the providers.
Well, I guess just for one example, Issaquah updated theirs in April of this year, so not terribly far behind, and there are other communities maybe who haven't done anything with their codes yet, but I think, as has been mentioned, there haven't been permits yet, but they will be coming, so.
And I can answer that, as someone who represents other cities in Washington, you guys really aren't that far behind. You know, I think the cities that have really done a lot of small cell ordinance, Bellevue was, I think, very ahead of the curve. Auburn was a client of mine, and they happened to just happen to be redoing their code when the new FCC order came out, so the timing on that was beautiful, but most cities aren't going to have that. So I don't think you guys are far behind at all, if at all behind. So I think you're exactly where you need to be. And frankly, as someone who's worked on this code with David Pyle, this has been, this has been a long time coming, and regardless of the small cell and the new FCC order, this is a change that has been needing to happen for a while.
I think it's good that we go, get to go a little bit at the end of the line, so we can see what everybody else does for mistakes. Anything else for Brittany? Thank you, Brittany.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Are we done now? Thank you to everyone for presenting. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that there were several different presenters, but interesting topic. Okay, so next on the agenda is public comment, and I believe mostly you probably will be speaking on this topic anyway, and I have a list here, so I can just go down the list if I can read them. So Mary, you did your public comment already, are you going to speak again?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay. Next is Patrick. Am I reading that right?
Patrick, are we speaking?
Are you talking about me? I already went.
Oh, sorry, Patrick. I didn't think that you'd have your name on here, so I figured maybe there was somebody I'm sorry. Devendra? Devendra? Did I get it close?
Close.
That's okay, nobody pronounces my name right, so I empathize.
Oh, here it is. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the board. My name is Devendra Maharaj with Verizon Wireless. I'm presenting information today on behalf of AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Verizon. It's important to note that each carrier has different technology, so today I'm going to be talking about the commonalities that we all share. I have a lot of information to go through, so I will be moving rather quickly, we will have some time at the end for questions. I know each of the other carriers will take a few minutes of their own, but if you do have any questions throughout, please just stop me, and I'll answer the best as I can. With that, let us get started. So we'll take a little history in telecom. The G stands for generation of technology, so 1G, the first generation, that gave us voice, the ability to talk mobily without the wire outside, wherever we wanted to go. 2G, that gave us the text messaging. 3G gave us basic data and apps. And then 4G, that's what we're experiencing today. That's what powers the remote control of our lives, which is what I like to call our cellphone. Faster data transfer rates, it gave rise to the devices and the services that we rely on and enjoy today. Now, the fifth generation, or 5G, is the next evolution in our technology. Blazing fast data rates and download speeds, a more powerful and robust network. It'll have a massive impact on how we work, live, and how we play. Things like autonomous cars, smart communities, industrial IoT, and immersive education, all that will rely on a 5G world. So what is a small wireless facility? It's also called a small cell. A small wireless facility is the next step in our deployment evolution. So it's not the technology, it's the deployment style, if you will. Most of us are familiar with the macro sites, the large towers and rooftops that provide service on the order of miles. They're right now, they're the backbone of our infrastructure. So today, the data, the need for data has grown, and we've been adding more macros and more macros to accommodate, but there's a natural limit as to how close you can put these macro sites. The radio waves literally start to cancel each other out the closer they get. So enter small wireless facilities. So these are slower-powered solutions, smaller installations targeted at the constraints in our network. There's no interference with that macro coverage layer. It adds capacity to the, and coverage to build a more robust network. This slide right here shows a great relationship between macro cells and small cells. So mobile data has increased 73 times in the last, since 2010, and in the last year alone, it's increased 82 times from last year to this year. We call that tremendous growth. What does that really mean? It means more people are doing more things with more devices in more places. And it's not just data, it's voice and text, too. It's likely more people are working remotely, taking advantage of that robust wireless network to do their job functions remotely. These devices have really given us control of our lives. If you think about it, I'm always connected to my bank, I'm always connected to my family, I'm always connected to my work and to my doctor, but importantly, I'm also always connected to an emergency response. 80% of 911 calls come, now come from a mobile device. First responders rely heavily on our mobile infrastructure to perform their core job functions. In fact, for every 60 seconds that a first responder is delayed in getting to a site, mortality goes up 8%. So our wireless infrastructure is very important to their core job functions. So let's compare macro and small wireless facilities a little bit more in detail. We talked about the technology types, 3G, 4G, 5G. Now we're going to talk about the deployment strategies. How do we get this out into the world? We've gone on We've gone over the macro towers, they're larger installations, they provide coverage on the order of miles, 80 to 200 feet tall. They have six to 12 large panel antennas, six to eight feet tall. And on the ground, there's two to four large cabinets, so it does take up a little bit of real estate. Small wireless facilities, they're only going to be mounted 20 to 40 feet in the air. One to five small panel antenna, or, excuse me, antennas approximately two feet in height. On the ground, there's zero ground equipment. On the pole, there's a small equipment cabinet. A lot of the info on this slide, I actually just mentioned on the previous slide, but the picture is a great picture. It's a side-by-side of a macro antenna and a small cell antenna. You can see how dramatically smaller the small cell antenna is compared to the macro. So the type of deployment depends on the current needs. Macros are still the backbone of our infrastructure. They provide service on the order of miles, in fact, sometimes even up to 20 miles in those flat rural areas. More users depend on this, well, more users will depend on this one facility, but in certain areas, in such as a downtown area, there'll be more users than that macro can handle. Small wireless facilities allow us to fill in those gaps and capacity issues in situations like that. Small wireless facilities use the same 4G frequencies that the macros are using, it's just on a smaller scale. Small cell typically cover about 300 to 2,000 feet. So the new 5G technology is built on the small wireless facilities' infrastructure. The frequency are much more sensitive, they don't travel as far, which means they need to be a little bit closer to the target, to the target audience, which means small wireless facilities are the appropriate platform for us to deploy the 5G technology. It's important to know that 5G is additive, it's not replacing 4G at this time. In fact, we're still using 3G today in some areas, so 4G will be around for some time. So let's put all that information together, we'll look at some designs, some photos. These are typical designs of typical installations that we've done, the best practices of what we're doing in the nearby municipalities. We'll start with utility poles, wood poles. This first one is a distribution pole. There's a canister at the top, there's a 5G antennas mounted mid-pole, and there's an equipment box mounted mid-pole as well. This scenario would involve a pole replacement to achieve the height. Here's another variation of a distribution pole. The 4G and 5G are mounted mid-pole. Now that can be accomplished with a pole replacement, or if the existing pole has sufficient clearances, we're able to use the existing pole. This next one is a transmission pole. The 4G is mounted higher up, the 5G is mounted in the middle, and a little lower down is the equipment mounted on the pole. Here's another one that I like. There's a cantina on an offset mount, mounted above the lumineer. Everything is colored to match, so everything blends in. Even in this photo, it's kind of hard to tell what is what, because it is blending. The equipment is typically mounted towards the street side, but we can follow whatever the AMSH code likes. And the equipment is mounted high enough where the public cannot easily access the equipment. However, a technician in a bucket truck would have no problems. Here's a couple more, like I said, very minimal designs. It almost blends into the existing design. It's no more burdensome than anything that's in the right of way at this time. So we'll take a look at light standards now. Typically, metal structures for the sole purpose of providing light. Light standards will usually result in a pole replacement for structural feasibility. In this scenario, the 4G and the 5G are mounted at the top, the equipment is mounted mid-pole, and right underneath, there is a power disconnect. All of our facilities require a power disconnect to de-energize the system should a technician need to get on the pole. This is the variation of that previous scenario. The 5G is mounted below the lumineer, the equipment is still in the same spot. This is just another option to show you that we do have some flexibility with our design. We are trying to work with the city, but we ask that the city also try to work with us and give us some flexibility. Restrictive designs lead to a less effective solution, and a less effective solution could lead to us needing a second facility just down the road to provide the full coverage and capacity that we're looking for.
Devendra, can you clarify for me?
Yes.
I think that's RPU, what is that, right above the disconnect? That's that big box, is that a power supply?
Oh, that is the equipment box. So the larger of the two boxes is the equipment. Right below that smaller one is the power disconnect.
Okay.
This is another replacement light standard. There is a cantina at the top. All the cables are routed internally, so it really does lead to a sleek and clean design. Here's a few more light standard examples, all sleek, all very visually conservative. So we'll jump to wireless-only poles, or sometimes called purpose-built poles. In areas where there are no poles, we would use something like this, or maybe where there are existing poles, but it's just a little too busy. So this is a photosim of a wireless-only pole in Bellevue. All the equipment is mounted on the pole, and we're able to provide service to this area without impacting the existing infrastructure. With most of our installations, we are only installing what we need. The picture on the right is a great example of dual purpose. The main purpose of this pole is to provide wireless service. However, you can see that there's two lights on there to provide light to that street. So we're providing a secondary use for that facility. We're able to add value to these by sometimes adding banners or flags or whatever the city, however the city can use it to their benefit as well. This pole, my second-to-last slide, this is, has a thicker profile, but all the equipment is internal to this pole. It does support 4G and 5G. It's important to know that at this time, 5G antennas cannot be painted or screened. As I said before, the, it's just too sensitive at this time. The 5G antennas here are integrated into the pole, however, if you look closely, the faces of the antenna are still exposed to allow the antenna to do its thing. And that does bring me to the end of my portion of this presentation. I really do thank you for your time and your attention. I am available for questions, should you have any?
Is it all right if we ask a couple questions?
However you'd like.
Then I'm going to do it.
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One of the questions is, when I look at those, are those typically one provider poles, or can they be shared, or are they likely to be shared? Because once you have something in place, it makes sense for T-Mobile and Verizon to share, or what should we expect? It makes a big difference to us.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Whether Verizon's going to put in 200 poles, and T-Mobile's going to put in 200 poles, or can they share?
The different carriers, we operate off different technology. We have different frequencies, different levels of how that signal goes. With that, our constraints are in different places because of where our macros are located. So it's very unlikely that we're going to be able to share poles. There's also the issue of clearances. It's just not feasible to house two carriers on one pole and have the required separation that we need to have between those two carriers. So the likeliness is very low that we'd be able to do that.
Okay, good to know.
Okay.
Are these, are these systems on some sort of backup power?
No. Small wireless facilities typically do not have any type of backup power. Should there be a power outage, these systems will go down. However, our macro facilities do have backup power built in, so they will stay online. You'll still be able to make your phone calls, your text messages, and your general data. However, you may not be able to do a lot of the, the more, the finer things that you'd be looking, streaming videos and such.
After storm of power goes, oh, you can't download a Netflix movie, but you can still make a 911 call.
Exactly, yes.
Got it. Is there any penalty that we're going to pay as a city because we have a heavily treed landscape? In other words, are the, at those frequencies, are the density of the antennas going to have to be greater here because of interference?
When we design our systems, we do try to take into consideration vegetation. Sometimes, depending on where we're going, it may, slight tree trimming may be in order, but we do try to work around, work around that.
I just see these are, you know, lower by some dozens of feet than, than the previous technology, so there potentially is more interference. I wondered if that means there's going to be more of those kind of issues.
Potentially, but we've been working around that.
Okay. I'm curious, what do you forecast the data speed is going to be with these systems once they're working properly?
There, there's a lot of factors, so I can't fully answer that. I can say, well, keep in mind, we're running 4G and 5G. So it's the existing speeds that you have now, however, there's just less congestion on that network in that one area. So while the speeds might be the same, your ability to access that speed will be greater. When the 5G starts to roll around, that'll be a whole nother ballgame. It'll be much faster, blazing fast data rates.
Anyone else have questions?
The chair brought up a question. Remember, I come from the old days, and there is alternate moderation and frequency model. Okay, when FM came in, it could go, a mountain didn't block it. You could get your radio programs. Is, and maybe one of the other providers can answer this, or should have waited. Is there research being done and work being done that we, I guess I'll just ask the question, that they could be further than 250 feet apart? Okay.
I think that has to do with the frequency and the ability to carry that information over distance. Radio, the common radio station, I believe, operates on a much different frequency, radio frequency than, than we are, and that's why there is that significant gap in how we're able, in what we can reach. At this time, I don't think that we're on that level.
May I speak into this?
Someday, they'll just mount them on your car, and then you won't have to worry about...
Do you mind if I speak into that?
Sure.
One thing about the 26 to 30 gigahertz range is, there is a little bit of absorption in the air, not, not that much. Some water fade, they call it, especially if it's rainy or foggy. But the big problem is that it's absorbed so easily by so many things. In fact, even your skin absorbs it, so it doesn't even penetrate skin. So any sort of vegetation or things of that nature, houses are going to just totally block it. So there's going to have, they're going to have to figure out a way of technologically getting the signal inside, probably with a repeater from a roof down into the inside of a house. That is one big problem they're having with it right now.
Fortunately, it's rarely rainy or foggy here, so I'm sure there'll be no problem with that. Do you guys have any questions?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Do the towers have to be, do you have to, you know, can you pop up a tower in a neighborhood and run fiber to it and have cell service there, or do the towers need to have a continuous connection to each other in order to provide service?
The, they just need, they don't need to be connected to each other, they can operate The first scenario, where we can just supply it with the correct power and fiber, and we can turn that on air.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Devendra.
Thank you. Yes.
Looks like next on the list is Carol.
No, I'm sorry, sir. We have a few more industry representatives to put there.
Okay.
That's me.
Yeah. Oh, apologies.
Hi, good evening. I also have a PowerPoint for you. And my name is Carol Tagayan, I'm Director of External Affairs. I work for AT&amp;T and Redmond. I live in Wittenville. And do you have a PowerPoint? Do I just need to press a button?
Yes, that's Carol's as well.
And first, I would just, while we're waiting for that to come up, there's, we can get started. I just want to thank you in advance for the work that you're going to be doing on this important policy update, and to you and to your staff. I really appreciate that, and also thank you in advance for reviewing our comments when they come in. And thank you to Devendra for well-representing the industry. And hopefully, I'll try not to repeat too much of what he, you know, what he said. I'm just going to talk a little bit about some of the background on what's going on in the industry. Hopefully, that'll be helpful to you. Greg is going to, Greg also represents AT&amp;T. He's going to go through a few photos, and, you know, I just wanted to upfront clarify, you know, there's 4G small cell, and there's 5G, and they are a little bit different as you go through, they get associated together because, you know, we need 4G small cells to be able to build out 5G later. But, but for us, for right now, small cell is really the capacity builder that we need to add into the existing network. As you know, we are all connected to our devices, it's really ingrained in our, in our lives now. We have just a tremendous demand for the services, the applications, and the conveniences that are provided on our devices. I heard in USA, there's something like average of 12 wireless devices per household. And so when you think of your iPad, your phones, but then also you might have alarms on your windows, and maybe a smart, maybe a modem, just so many different wireless devices in our, our homes currently. The average right now in the US for wireless devices is four hours. We're on average, four hours. And really, what's happening as we more integrate more and more of these digital aspects into our lives, it's really kind of changing our culture, how we live and work, and it's a big technology shift as well. Some of this data, I think Devendra also mentioned about how important it is to get 911 calls, but, you know, many households nowadays, they don't have landline connections. There's no more of the crank phones, or even a touch tone phone. People don't even know what they are. And folks that do have still landline phones never use them. 75% of households with landline phones, they just keep them for emergencies, which is funny, since when we first got our cellphones, they were for emergencies, but now we really depend on them. And additionally, cities are turning to wireless devices and access to make improvements on how they operate and becoming smart cities, looking for saving money and bringing other benefits to the community. On AT&amp;T's network, since the iPhone came into effect in 2007, our data growth has been 470,000 percent on our data network. So it's kind of really, really crazy. I saw an article that said that, on average, we are swiping, tapping, or clicking our devices 2,617 times per day. And on average, people check their device 63 times a day. So it just means that wherever we're at, we, you know, we are expecting our devices to work, we count on them, we're relying on them. We don't know where we're going without our map apps and the different applications that we use. So it's very important that our network is built and increased and has the capacity that our customers are able to access those services that they need. And so where it's needed, we're looking to add these small cells to boost the capacity on our network. And 5G, when that comes, is going to enable us to even have more devices on that network, faster speeds, and lower latencies, which is going to really be the revolution that we're looking at in the United States to get ahead of 5G, to bring in those economic potential of economic applications and services that will be developed here, or to, for whatever country gets the 5G going. Luckily for us, we were ahead of the game on 4G, and a lot of those applications started here, and so we're hoping to see that continue with 5G. But again, as I mentioned, it is a growing process. First, we have to get to small cell, and... First, we have to get to small cell, and, and then we can go forward from there. And with that, I'm going to turn over to Greg to go through the next few slides. And I'll be here for questions. Thanks.
So after that, I feel like I need to check my phone. I'm assuming you don't mind, right?
Oh, of course not, by all means.
Well, it's not on AT&amp;T, so I guess not.
In that case. Gregory Bush, Wireless Policy Group here tonight on behalf of AT&amp;T. Wireless Policy Group's offices are in Issaquah, Washington. And I'll be brief and respectful of your time. I understand we have a lot of presentations tonight. So right now, a lot of my work deals with actually applying for permits and franchises that these small cells rely on. So I figured it was time for me to step in and describe some of what these designs look like and the potential we have when it comes to deciding on what aesthetic the community would go for. So for this one right here is one of my favorites, as well as Devendra's favorites. I appreciated that he liked AT&amp;T's design. If you look at the design, the brown box that stands out about 15 feet off the ground, that's the equipment box, and I don't think you can make out the power shut-off switch there. But if you look to the left of the equipment box, that's the conduit that goes up the side of the utility pole. And the conduit has to be offset because poles have to be climbable. And this isn't just a local thing, this is national safety thing. When it comes down to, if there's a storm or if repair work needs to be done, there's no bucket trucks that can get out there, then there has to be a way for a technician to climb the pole and repair for electrical utilities. And when you see that, that's what that actually is. And then, of course, there is the omnidirectional antenna that's on the side of the pole. And for PSE, I just learned that, that has to be street-side unless there's no other way, but my understanding is that it has to be street-side. So I assume I pressed this to change this here. And these small cells, by the way, are all actually online. None of these are 5G, but these are actually functioning facilities that work. They're currently active in their communities right now. So these two are in Dallas, Texas, and these are pole-top utility pole design. AT&amp;T does prefer to go on utility poles. Oftentimes, we have agreements with utility providers that make these a lot easier to get out in the wild. And you'll notice that the omnidirectional antennas are on top of the pole, and you may notice the conduit as well. Generally, we paint to match the equipment boxes. We paint the equipment boxes and conduit to match the color of the pole. So these are older designs that we haven't painted, but that does make them easier to spot, so. And these two are in Indianapolis. The one on the left uses the same utility pole design. This is a little closer to the ground. And the one on the right is still hard to spot. I still have trouble picking it out. But if you notice, it's on the traffic light, and it is on the lower of the right pole and the antenna. You can barely see the omnidirectional antenna to the left of the, the left of the two streetlights. And...
That looks like the antenna's painted. I was, I thought I heard maybe the antennas can't be painted.
This is, again, these are not 5G.
Oh, 5G is a difference.
These are 4G LTE designs. None of these are 5G right now, and I think it's important to remember that, yeah.
In order to make that 5G, you have to put an antenna that's not painted.
5G relies on small cell tech, small cell technology, but they are not one and the same thing. And finally, these in San Francisco, these are part of streetlight standards, and the antennas are on the very top, and the equipment boxes are very small, and you can notice them just above the no parking sign. There's two there. Those are the radios. And we're available for questions if you have...
So what dictates the size of those boxes? Some of them seem pretty much, pretty different in size from, I saw those were smaller, although they were separated. Maybe that makes a difference? Are there things that really influence that?
Yes. Depending on coverage objectives, how far the equipment needs to go. Generally, the higher up the antenna is, AT&amp;T has two designs primarily right now, the PICO and micro designs. The micro designs use larger radios and project further, and the PICO designs are much smaller. And that doesn't match quite up with the PICO design. That's, that was one of the earlier small cells. But they use smaller equipment boxes that I think they're less than, should be less than 11 cubic feet. I, sorry, don't quote me on that, but it's, it's definitely less than 11, 11 cubic feet, and these are the smallest we have. So that's, I think it's in the single digits.
Great.
Can I ask, and I asked you before, when are we likely to start to see this happening on our streets?
Oh, that's, that's the question everyone wants to ask. Ballpark.
Ballpark, just because for, we've got residents who, who I think watch our meetings and are at least going to watch us on YouTube, and just for, for their information, when are they likely to see installation ballpark kind of timeframe? You know, is it a year from now? Is it five years from now? Is this 10 years from now? You know, what time, kind of timeframe are we looking at?
I'll answer your question with another question. Is it small cells or 5G you're looking for?
You choose.
All right.
Small cells, yeah.
All right, small cells. That depends on what, how easy it is to get the small cells out, what kind of code allows for the aesthetics of the pole design, where and when we can place them. It ultimately comes down to a whole range of different factors. I, it's, considering the code isn't going before council before end of this year, I don't think we can see these before end of this year. I'm sure some of, some people would want to apply for them as soon as possible. Those are some people, but I, yeah, I can't give anything more specific than I don't see them this year in Simamish.
Okay, so over the, maybe the next two to three years, we might start to see this on our streets? Two to five years?
Um, that seems like a safe guess.
Okay. And then my other question was, it seems like, so from what I'm gathering, is that each telecommunications company have their own technology, have their, they transmit in their own frequency, so they're going to have their own equipment. So then we're likely then to see every utility pole, probably on our streets, will have some form of small cell technology attached to it in order to accommodate all these companies. Am I right in saying that?
I don't think that's entirely accurate. The demand for utility poles, again, it depends on coverage objectives.
Yeah.
One carrier will have a macro facility in one location, another carrier will have a macro facility in another, and the holes in the networks that'll need to be plugged depend entirely on the own carrier's infrastructure. So you may see some small cells that are operated by AT&amp;T. You may see some that are operated by T-Mobile, and the difference in density could depend entirely on which neighborhood you're in.
Right. So, because I'm just trying to get a mental picture of what our city's going to look like when we start this or when maybe we're, we're done. So we may not see a situation where every pole that we have going down the street will have something semi-large or small attached to it. It's just, I'd like to, I'm just trying to get a mental picture of what we will look like as we go through this process, because, you know, I already see, I come from a country where we put our, our electrical lines underground, and so when we drive along, we don't see all this horrible mess. So I'm kind of thinking about what this is going to look like when we already have all these wires going across. And I know I'm talking very highbrow and highly technical here, but I'm just a person who lives in a city, and I just want to know what my city's going to look like when this is all done. And I, am I going to like what I'm going to see, or am I going to say, I know we need 5G, but boy, is it ugly? So I know, you probably cannot answer that question for me, so it's, it's more a statement rather than anything else. So it's just something I'd like everyone to think about.
I'm going to interrupt and move that we extend the meeting time to 9:00 PM.
Second.
Moving to second to extend the meeting to nine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thanks. Okay, other questions for Greg?
Can it be put underground other than the antenna? Can all the other equipment be put underground?
Can the equipment be put underground? The problem with putting equipment underground is that when you put the equipment in a vault, then you have to make it waterproof, because as it does rain around here, when water, you have to make the vault waterproof, and then that means there's no ventilation. So you have two competing things there. The equipment does generate heat, and in order to vent that heat, there needs to be airflow. And when you put airflow around that, that means water can get in. So we've had some, we've floated the idea of vaulting the equipments, and it, the difficulties make it extremely costly. And while it is technically possible, it's, again, extremely costly, and it's not our preferred solution.
What about on the ground?
That is one option, but then you, carriers try to avoid that, because then you have issues with the ADA and sidewalk space and making sure pedestrians and vehicles, it doesn't impede the right-of-way.
Yeah, we have quite a few locations in Simamish where that may not be as much of an issue, so it's worth considering.
I'm trying to figure out how to ask my question. I don't know where all the holes in the networks are in Simamish, so I don't know as far as small cell goes, where you'll try to plug the network first. But as far as 5G goes, I mean, a lot of our houses are pretty far apart in a lot of areas of Simamish. And so realistically, where would the network see expanding 5G technology on our main thorough affairs, and our neighborhoods aren't going to really be an option, because you can only serve like one house per, per antenna? And is that how we should, what would we be looking at there?
5G takes two forms. There's the lower-band 5G, and then there's what was talked about, the part that gets talked about a lot is the millimeter wave. 5G does go on macro facilities, although I don't know when that will be brought out. So don't think that just because there are no small cells or because the small cells cover a short range, it's also coming to the broader spectrum.
Okay. But as far as the small cells go, could we expect to see them, what, should we not expect to see them being installed in some of our less dense neighborhoods?
It depends on what the, each network's coverage objective is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Quick question. You referenced Puget Sound Energy and street-side placement of the poles. Do all the utility providers, are they going to want it street-side? Because when, when we go to write the code up, we'll need to kind of know that.
That, each utility takes a different tack. I've had conversations with different utility providers, and some utility providers want us to go on the top of the pole, some want us in the, won't let us around the communication space for equipment. Some of us want to avoid certain areas of the pole. It's, I wouldn't codify based around utility providers' expectations. That's just my personal opinion.
5G can be transmitted by fiber optic cables, correct?
I'm having a hard time answering that. Can 5G be transmitted? So fiber is important for small cells to function, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, so I'm, I'm asking the question in regards to the question about small cells being in neighborhoods. Could you get 5-cell through your router into your house through your fiber optic cable, or does it have to come through the air?
It, it sounds like more of a Wi-Fi solution. If it's coming through your router, that comes down to a question of licensed spectrum. I'm sure someone could describe it better than me, but if you're purchasing a piece of equipment to get better coverage on your phone using the same spectrum that a carrier provides, carriers buy their spectrum, so I don't think there would be a commercially available device that lets you get the same frequency as 5G in your house. So I think what you may be imagining is just better Wi-Fi using the already available spectrum, that's unlicensed spectrum.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else for Greg? Okay, thanks, Greg. Would anybody else like to make public comment?
My name is Lacey Atkins. I'm an attorney at your... I thank you all for your attention. Obviously, you've gotten a lot of information. Thank you. From your staff and from the other providers. And I'm not going to pile on to that. I just want to make, I guess, a few remarks. First of all, is you may have picked up from the presentations from the other providers, the macro facilities are going to continue to be the backbone of a wireless network. They're not going to go away. And your code revision is, it's repeal and replace. So when you get the code and you're thinking about the policy choices that you're making, keep in mind that you're adopting a code that's going to provide a structure for all the wireless infrastructure that is going to be in your city. And there, there will potentially be the need for new macro facilities in the future. And so there, I mean, there's some policy choices that you're going to have to be making as you consider your code. And so, for example, with respect to heights, you want to be sure that when you look at the code, you're focusing not just on small cells, but on what are the appropriate heights for a macro facility. And I think one of you already referenced the fact that there are a lot of tall trees in Simamish. There's also some pretty challenging topography. There are a lot of hills. And by their nature, the signal is line of sight. It has to be able to see over the, the trees and the topography. So there needs to be some, some kind of a process to allow a provider to be able to achieve the height that's technically necessary for one of those facilities. Another point I wanted to emphasize is, in terms of the legal landscape that is established by the FCC order, there are a couple of, a couple of points that the FCC made in its order that are, they're not just confined to small cells, they're broadly applicable to wireless regulations. And I think the most important of those is the FCC set in its order that the regulations should not materially limit or inhibit the ability of wireless providers to compete in a fair and balanced regulatory environment. And when you think about that, so what does that mean? You have to keep in mind that as wireless providers, we're not just competing with each other. We're also competing with DSL and voice providers like Quest, and with cable providers, with VoIP and internet services. And those, those utilities are not governed by this particular code. So you have to keep in mind that in order to establish a fair and balanced regulatory environment, we don't want to go too far over towards restricting wireless facilities through, you know, overly restrictive height requirements or hierarchies that make a wireless provider go through a lot of process in order to get a particular site, because if that happens, then you're moving towards a situation where you're actually regulating the technology and the design of the network, which is not something that is appropriate for a local government to do. That's something for a provider to do. So just some things to, to think about as you make those policy choices. We're looking forward to working with your staff and with you and with the city attorney to help create a, a workable code for the city of Simamish. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to make public comment? All right. Thank you, everyone. I think we're going to beat your target, Larry.
But I have a comment.
Okay.
Okay.
Any final comments, Larry?
Can I move to extend the movement back to, no. Did I? What I wanted to say, first of all, this was a learning experience, and I, you know, yes. But I wanted to give a, the city of Simamish is going to receive, has received professional input. There will be staff input, the public input on this. And I think one thing that should tell us is, let's be a leader in this. Let's set some high goals, not so much to catch up with other municipalities, but to have a real firm end product. And I guess what I'm saying is, get to work on it, and let's not procrastinate. Let's put something out there as reasonably soon as possible. That's all.
Anyone else? Anything further? Kelly? Dennis? All right. Would someone please move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening.
Thank you.